Happy New Year and good evening. Welcome to the planning board meeting for January 16th, 2024 for the East Fishkill Town. Please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will do a roll call, starting with John Greenan.
John Greenan.
John Gevenoli.
Lori G.
John Eichman.
Richard Campbell.
Ed Miyoshi.
Sarah Bledsoe.
Thank you. Upcoming meeting dates are February 20th, 2024, and March 19th, 2024. I was not able to review the minutes, so we'll put those off until the next meeting, the minutes for the December 19th meeting. The first item on the agenda is Donovan Site Plan 8 Nancy Court.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Robert Rose. I'm a representative of Donovan 5 BMAC LLC. And this is actually regarding 6 Nancy Court, not 8 Nancy Court. This is for a new proposed building. I was here a year ago now to request an extension, and we were granted two six-month extensions, which puts us at December 7th, 2023. And we're here to request a bit more of an extension because over the course of this past year, we had reviewed our site plans. There were some questions that you, the board, had when I was here a year ago that we confirmed with the architects who did the site plans, Michael Gillespie. We had made the changes that were necessary based on zoning changes. And we've been working with our architect, Michael Berta, who we just met with the ARB on January 4th to get approval for the changes that we have made. And he's working on getting us construction drawings for the building. So we are in the process of moving along with this project. And we don't want to hold it up any further. But we do still need some more time while we get the rest of the documentation and we get the rest of the team of architects to get us the information we need. So I'm here requesting another extension if that would be possible.
And do you anticipate this will be the last extension you will require?
That is the goal, yes.
What's the timeline for this building and the plans and all this?
So the timeline, we're looking within this year to begin building. And that's going to be dependent upon us getting approvals and having all the drawings right and being able to get the permitting and all of that stuff. So barring any issues, we're looking to begin in this year. And that's why we're here to request the extension so that it doesn't fall back to an earlier stage and we have to restart from the beginning. We'd like to continue moving on and getting this completed in a much quicker time than it has taken so far.
In your discussion or what you had told us, have you switched professionals? From, you said you used Gillespie and now you're using somebody else?
Yes, so Michael Gillespie did the original site plans. And we are using Michael Berta to do the construction drawings. So we are using a new architect. Unfortunately, over the year, there was some scheduling issues. I know Michael Berta had some surgery that ended up putting him out of commission for a couple months. And we've now gotten back on track. And again, on January 4th, we met with the Architectural Review Board and got all approvals for our new plans.
Any other questions by board members?
Are you expecting with the new plans that you need to make any site plan changes?
No, there shouldn't be any site plan changes to make.
Your footprint is still the same and everything?
Yes, the footprint is all the same. The changes that we've made were actually so that we could take the plans to, as an example, Star Building, they do steel buildings that are kind of prefab. So it makes construction go a little quicker. And it's something that we could actually get a foundation and a frame up and actually get a building in place without taking much longer in design stages or anything of that nature. So those were the changes we made, but all of the site plans have remained. We have not changed any of the site.
Any questions or comments by our professionals?
Do you know what your proposed use is yet?
It is still light manufacturing. It is right now an open space, kind of like warehouse type, but it could be split into, you know, separate units as well or separate suites down the line if that is necessary. But it is for light manufacturing, which we're currently doing at 8 Nancy Court.
Okay, any other questions or comments by board members or professionals?
Just maybe just a point, you said this is 6 Nancy Court. So is the information on the agenda correct for, this was originally approved in 2009? And we've extended, okay.
Yes, yes. It is for 6 Nancy Court. 8 Nancy Court is within the same lot and it is owned by Donovan 5 as well. But the new building is at 6 Nancy Court, which is right across the parking lot.
Okay, we do have a resolution extending final site plan approval. Name of site plan, Route 376 Business Park, Lot Number 3, AKA Donovan Site Plan, located at 6 Nancy Court. Resolution offered by Planning Board Member John Eichman. Whereas the applicant received site plan approval for a commercial building on Lot Number 3 of the East Fishkill Business Park on 6/2/2009. Whereas the applicant previously received site plan approval extensions, as noted in the agenda, I won't go through all of those dates. Whereas the applicant is requesting two three-month extensions of final site plan approval from December 7th, 2023 to June 7th, 2024. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board extends final site plan approval through June 7th, 2024 for the above project, as represented on a map, entitled amended site plan for Lot Number 3, Route 376 Business Park, prepared by M. Gillespie and Associates, P L L C, dated July 24th, 2008, and revised through March 6th, 2009 with the following conditions. Actually, there are no conditions. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner. May I have a second for this resolution?
Second.
We'll do a roll call vote. Board Member Lori G.
Aye.
Ed Miyoshi.
Aye.
Sarah Bledsoe.
Aye.
Richard Campbell.
Aye.
John Greenan.
Aye.
John Gevenoli.
Aye.
And John Eichman, I'm an aye. Carry. So passed, thank you very much.
That date was June 7th, June 7th, 2024?
The date we have is June 7th, 2024?
Great.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
It's greatly appreciated. Have a great night. Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is Formicola subdivision. We've been adjourning the public hearing. We will open the public hearing tonight. We anticipate being able to close the public hearing and to issue a neg deck, but we'll put off the final decision and resolution until next month. So with that, could I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So the public hearing is open. Anything to discuss?
The only thing we have is we sent an update today to the town. We have conceptual approval from New York State DOT for the proposed driveway entrance and the location that we show. So that's the only update we have. We're just waiting on Seeker so we can proceed with Health Department and securing our Health Department approvals.
So there are a couple of things that I had notes on that I just want to double check with you on. We talked about a conservation area noted on the plans and the deed. That's to be done?
Yep, we have a 30-foot no-cut easement or restriction along both Lot 1 and 2, along the ball fields. And then the second one is a sidewalk easement along Route 376. And that's shown on the plan. And as we progress with Board of Health, we'll get a set of descriptions and map check to the town engineer to review.
And that affects both parcels?
Correct.
Any questions by board members or comments? Any questions or comments by our professionals?
Yeah, I just have a question. Is the DOT, have you talked to the DOT about the sidewalk? And did they give you any indication about what they're going to require?
Conceptually, they agreed with the area that we showed. So they didn't have any plans to improve the corridor, but the width that we showed on the sidewalk area was acceptable.
And what was the width that you showed?
I think it was eight foot.
Okay.
And you have a pretty big right-of-way through that corridor.
So you can add to it, is what you're saying?
Right, right. It's not the standard 25 foot from center line or 30 foot from center line. It's actually pretty wide through that corridor.
All right, we'll just double check that way.
Okay, are there any members of the public who are here to speak for or against the project? If not, I'll accept a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
And I'll review the neg deck and I'll just summarize things. So if anybody wants to see a full copy, they can see it in the planning department. This is name of action, Formicola 2 Lot Subdivision, Street Address 378 Route 376. The proposed action is a subdivision of a 3.61 acre lot with an existing home, garage, and shed into two lots. The lots would comply with our one zoning. A 30-foot non-disturbance buffer would be established to maintain a visual buffer between the proposed lots and the existing Hopewell Recreation Park to reduce the potential for land use conflicts. A sidewalk easement will be provided along Route 376 frontage of both lots to allow for a future sidewalk connection between Town Hall and downtown Hopewell Junction. The proposed project would not be expected to result in any significant adverse impacts on the environment for the following reasons. It will not generate a significant amount of additional vehicles, noise, or emission levels. Will not significantly affect rare or endangered species of animal, plant, or habitat of such species. It will not result in any impacts to historic or archaeological resources. Will not result in any impacts related to hazardous materials. Will not result in any significant effect on air, water quality, or ambient noise levels for adjoining areas. Does not be subjected to unacceptable risk of flooding or major geological hazards. Will not have a substantial aesthetic effect. Will not involve adversely affect any surface water or groundwater. Will not allow for improper uses within specified zoning districts. Will not result in adverse cumulative impacts. Will not result in adverse growth inducing impacts. And will not conflict with the town's comprehensive plan. Could I have a motion to approve this neg deck?
So moved.
Second.
And all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So with that, I think we've completed the business. We will reserve a spot for you at the next meeting and when we can talk about the final approval.
All right, I appreciate guys. Thank you.
You bet. Okay, the next item on the agenda is actually an adjournment. It's Gasland East Fishkill Wine and Spirits. And we will adjourn that until the following meeting, which then gets us to stack and store.
I do apologize, I'm just setting up the boards here. Thank you for your.
No problem.
All right, again, I do apologize. My name is Chris Palowski. I'm a licensed professional engineer with Soli Engineering, here to talk about 1088, 1090, 1092, 1094, and 1096 through 82. We have been before you multiple times. We are proposing an 82,700 square foot self-storage facility. The major differences since last time that I want to talk about are we did make contact with New York State DOT. Following conversations with Cassandra Beebe, I apologize if I mispronounced her name. She indicated to us that two one-way driveways would be acceptable in lieu of the two two-way driveways that we previously had. So we did revise the site plan. We have the driveways relatively in the same spots, but we just minimized the width of the driveways. So instead of two 24-foot two-way driveways, we now have two one-way driveways. So the driveway to the north will be the entrance and the driveway to the south will be the exit. We also revised the driveways going around the building in order to accommodate WB62. So in that way, the large moving truck that we discussed in previous hearings can now pull into the site, travel around the building and exit, and can go both ways upon an entrance and exit. That's demonstrated in this truck turning movement right here. So again, this is WB62 tractor-trailer navigating into the site. So you can identify my bearings, coming around the building, and then exiting. And they can go both ways. The fire truck, turning apparatus, we did receive the layout from the planning director. And we did run the fire truck apparatus that navigated around the building as well. And as well, and finally, SU30 box truck. And so the plans that you have before you, there's three truck turning movements, PT1, PT2, PT3. Those all demonstrate that box truck, a large-scale tractor-trailer, and the fire apparatus in town, these two can all navigate the site. Other than that, the major changes that we had mostly had to do with lighting and landscaping. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
So the other major changes we had had to do with lighting and landscaping. So I'll start with landscaping first. So we did receive some comments from Duchess County regarding adding some additional landscaping in front of and around the building. So we added additional trees in the front and along the south side of the building. That's just to, now essentially all four sides of the building are screened by trees, if you will. We did revise the entire lighting plan. One of the other comments from Duchess County had to do with achieving a bug rating of zero, which has to do with glare and brightness and other items for lights, excuse me, a bug rating of one or less. So we changed out pretty much all the fixtures on the building and on the site to achieve this bug rating of one or less. And what it essentially does is it keeps the light directed down, has to do with brightness, reduces glare with a pretty high standard. And we made sure that the plan complied with that comment. I wish I had my PowerPoint here because I don't have the sections printed for me, but there's another comment about extending the building sections throughout the site. So if in the packet before you, there's a 2.22 and a 2.23. And again, I do apologize to have them on the PowerPoint but not printed. But essentially, there's a cross-section that goes through the site and extends to the neighboring property in the back. And then it also covers the house that's located across the street from the property. You can, you'll see in the section that this person's house, they won't be able to see the building from the rear. So again, there's a property that extends to the rear of the property. It's a residence. And essentially, what happens is their house is down in grade. It climbs in grade that's out there along our property line where it gets higher. And then it comes back down to where our building is proposed. So between the natural wooded buffer that we're leaving and the position of their house, it won't be able to see the facility once constructed. Across the street, they are going to see the building, but it is within the high requirements of the town. And we did, again, provide additional trees in front of the building. And I believe it's 134 feet from the property line and even farther to the residence from our building to where the residence is across the street. Additionally, we have over 100 feet to the neighbor, to the north, to their building from our building. And again, we do have that evergreen screen road along the northern property line. And then to the south is a commercial building. But again, I apologize, I don't have the PowerPoint up. These are all demonstrated, 2.22 and 2.23 building sections or cross-sections across the site. Other than that, there's one more thing. There was a comment regarding the building signage. So this is our revised architectural rendering. We did take off the office text as we discussed at the last meeting. So it just has the Stack and Store logo up here. Believe that presents a nice clean look. I apologize. So we believe it presents a nice clean look. And again, I believe it should be within the regulations, but I would defer to the architect to make sure that those requirements are met.
Did you change the sign dimension on that upper wall? Because I think there was also a comment last time, Michelle, that the sign itself is actually larger than what code allowed.
I believe the dimension's still the same. The architect is working on revising it for this meeting. They just wanted to make sure at least we did make an effort to remove the office and show you that we're making progress on working to resolve any outstanding issues, so.
So with regards to signage, though, you'll still have the monument sign on the road entrances, both?
There's one monument sign.
Okay, so going back to the original sketch plan you had with regards to traffic movement on the site. There were some comments made last time about tractor-trailer trucks and their accessibility, not just around the facility, but obviously you'll have a gated entrance into the back part of the building. So what about tractor-trailer movement in front of the building? Should a tractor-trailer just come upon the site, gates locked? Then what happens in the front? Like from that, their ability to turn onto the site, exit the site, and actively move about the site?
So we'll have signage to prevent that from happening, but the truck at this time is not going to be able to make that turn. So they physically, they won't back up traffic. They'll pull completely into the site, so they won't be sticking out into Route 82, if you will. But they won't be able to make that first turn. They will have to go around the building just due to the turning radius and how the length of our driveway, there's not enough in order to get in, make that right-hand turn, and then make another right without going into the stormwater basin, so.
So I would, I would feel that somewhat problematic because we.
Show us on the plan where the gates go.
Yeah.
So this is where the truck would enter and the gate is all the way up past the office. So there's more than enough room for the truck to enter the site where it's not going to be impeding any traffic on Route 82. So we essentially pull in and say it stops here. This is more than the length of WB62 before the gate.
But technically, if he couldn't get past the gate, he'd have to back out onto Route 82.
So there's either pulling you there that would be able to unlock the gate and let the truck around or the facility is monitored 24/7. They would be able to notice that something is happening, would be able to open the gate for the tractor-trailer, so they'd be able to navigate around the site.
Can you just bring that back for me? I see there's, is this, these entrances, you said they're one direction, right? These entrances, but they're not drawn on this plan as far as the direction on the entrances, so.
We have some arrows here.
So this is the top ones, the entrance?
This is the entrance, that is correct.
So any vehicles that are going north, I guess, have to make a right and go around the building to exit?
Correct. Or they can pull into a parking space, back out, and go the other way. There's do not enter signs on this side. If you're trying to make it right here, if you're trying to.
So I think that needs to get cleaned up a little bit because it's a little misleading about the.
It's on this side, but I apologize. It's not tractor-friendly.
Because you have this arrow here that indicates a car can go north.
So these are do not enter signs right here?
And like a no, and then there'd be a no left turn, I guess.
Correct.
So you'd only be able to make that right.
That's correct.
And the front is only open when the gates are open, is that it?
This, the only gates in the property are here.
Right.
And in the rear back here. The entire rest of the site is 24-hour and now if you have to come in for whatever reason. Like you can pull into the site and access the front of the building.
Right, so if you pull out, how are they gonna, you know, if the front's open but the gates closed, you gotta think how you're gonna sign that if you don't get confusion with people looking.
We'd probably put a sign right at the end of this truck, right here. It says right turn only or do not enter.
Well, but a right turn leads you to a gate.
Correct.
And if you're in a box truck or something, not so easy to turn around.
Yeah, you'd have to turn here back. We could add signs to the plan to accommodate that. But I appreciate the questions.
The truck itself, when it goes around the back, there's a place for the truck to pull off and unload that won't block circulation around the back of the building?
That's correct, yes. We moved the building forward, not this iteration, the previous one, to allow for a 10 or 12-foot wide loading space in the back. And then there's another 18 feet for the driveway.
Okay, I think there were also some concerns mentioned by Christian, our engineer, on this regarding stormwater, possible overflow from the stormwater detention basins?
So we ran an additional analysis that basically assumes a zero infiltration rate. So right now, we have two stormwater ponds in front of the property. They're split by the southern drive, basically. And we are currently, we did field testing out there that was witnessed by CPL, which I believe is Christian's company. And we obtained infiltration rate and we conservatively used a rate that was less than the one that we obtained. But since it does a but Route 82, there were some concerns. What if the ponds fill in over time? What if you don't get the infiltration rate that you're assuming? So in order to respond to this, we did revise the basin. This is revised as part of the last revision, so we didn't change it this time. But we assume no infiltration, what happens? And basically, the basins fill up and in the 100-year storm, so this is 100-year, the worst storm event, essentially, the water will just slowly go over the spillway a bit. So it'll spill over the spillway into the road.
Into the road?
That's correct.
82?
Yes.
That sounds like a non-starter.
But that's assuming that there's no infiltration right on site, which we've done testing to prove otherwise.
December, like the month we're in right now, and one day it's 50 and pouring, and the next day it's 10 and freezing, and then it's 50 again and it rains and the ground's frozen. You're going to get zero infiltration.
Correct.
Now you're telling me it's going to go over, potentially go over the spillway onto Route 82?
That's a worst-case scenario. It doesn't guarantee that it's gonna.
I think we all see we're living now in these.
I think we've had two of those in the last month, I think.
We did look at the stormwater basin and potentially make it deeper on water.
I'll tell you that right now. You gotta figure out where that water's gonna go.
Okay.
We designed.
You have to step up.
Excuse me, sir, if you could come to the microphone, thank you.
Yeah, but you can't have an emergency spillway dump onto a road, any road. You gotta have another drainage course to accept. You gotta have another drainage course to accept it.
For the, all the storm events that are required by the New York State Stormwater Manual, there's no water that exits the spillway, and we provide the minimum freeboard required. The situation that you are asking for is not part of the New York State Stormwater Code.
Right. We can continue to discuss that.
I'd be happy to have a conversation outside of the meeting.
Okay, questions and comments by board members? Other questions and comments by our professionals?
The submission, I think, we just got on Friday, so we haven't really had a chance to fully review it. So we'll, you know, hopefully, it sounds like we may be setting up a meeting to discuss stormwater, so maybe at that meeting, we'll be able to have some comments as well, if we have any.
And have they appeared before Architectural Review and have all that?
Yes, they did that early on in the process. They were in front of ARC, yeah.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, should I-
And I was gonna say, Fire Advisory, we had talked a little bit about a few things. Have you reviewed the plans and-
Well, the last plans we got weren't the latest ones that I saw here last month, so we need the latest set of plans to look at. We also have a question about, we assume on the exit road, there's gonna be a gate also?
Correct.
And that's gonna have some type of sensor to open it?
That's correct.
Well, we would like to see, and it'll be in our next recommendation, on a fire alarm, that both gates actually open?
Understood.
That can be done easily?
Correct.
So we don't have to worry about having the card key, we agreed, that's a good way in the Knox box, and that would be good for an ambulance call or whatever as a backup, but we'd also like to see on a fire alarm, the gates open?
Understood.
That is the current design of our facilities. All of them operate that way.
Okay. Yeah, we can make that, we can make that a condition for the building inspector to make sure that on our construction drawings, that function is included. We just want to make sure it's in there before it gets to him, and he said, you know, if he doesn't catch it, we want to make sure we did, so.
I've noted-
That could be part of the-
I can, I can put it into the site plan.
And is the building sprinklered? I know we talked about the-
Yes, it is sprinkled.
It's a wet system, dry system?
It's a wet system.
It is, so fully, so the entire interior of the building's conditioned and climate controlled?
Did you see, I'm sorry. Did you see our latest comments?
I believe we did, and I believe we did respond to that.
Okay. I haven't seen the response, but we did have a concern on the doors leading into those false doors on the second floor in the front, because they could be construed as an exit door, and somebody get out there and be-
Now your call.
Sorry. And be trapped in there. So I don't know what the purpose of those doors were going to the false doors, if that was gonna be a storage area, but they can't be construed as being an exit.
I believe our architect is working to remove that.
As long as you got our comments.
Yes, understood, and thank you for the comments. We appreciate them.
And I'm sorry, I just wanted to confirm your parking plan with the changes you made to the site circulation. You didn't lose any parking spaces, or you're not land banking, or?
That is correct. We didn't modify any of the parking spaces. We essentially, there's two radii in the back corners of the building. We had to swing those out to accommodate the WB62 truck, but we did not modify any parking.
Okay.
And you still avoid the R1-zoned lot?
That is correct.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Are we at a level, Michelle, do you think, where we can schedule a public hearing for the project?
I mean, it's up to the planning board, but it appears that they've gotten the traffic circulation to a point where it's not gonna change significantly, which is what we were concerned about before.
And I think the big item that's still the open question has to do with stormwater, and you'll be meeting about that.
That's correct.
Any, anybody have any objections to proceeding? So I'll accept a motion to schedule a public hearing, but I guess before we do that, let me check with you. Will you be able to do that on our next meeting, which is?
February 20th.
On February 20th, 2024?
Yes.
Okay. So could I have a motion to schedule the public hearing for February 20th, 2024? So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I'd like to see some full-size depictions of the building sections that you discussed with us?
Yes.
Because things were delivered late, I'm not sure about the other board members. I didn't have an actual opportunity to view those, but I'd love to see the big, big copies, and I'm sure the audience would as well.
Yes, and they should be available as sheets 2.22 and 2.23 in your packets. And I apologize for the late, we just received correspondence from the DOT, and I wanted to make sure that we pass that along to all of you. So I do apologize for that.
The elevations will be required for the public hearing, because we do the architectural public hearing, so you have to bring the large scale, or else have them posted. And then you'll just need to call Jackie for the instructions about how to schedule the public hearing, I mean, set up the public hearing.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it, and thank you all for your time tonight.
You're welcome, thank you. Okay. We'll give him an opportunity to gather stuff. The next item on the agenda is Lidl Warehouse.
Yes, good evening. C. Wilson with Bowler Engineering on behalf of the applicant. Yes, I don't have a presentation tonight, because our plans really haven't changed since we last saw you. And we did receive review letters today, I just saw, including one from the town planner, town engineer, and a traffic engineer, which it's great, we're kind of diving into the process now after kind of some months of spinning our wheels a little bit on our end, I think. So obviously, our next task is to dive into those. I barely got a chance to resume today, so if it's okay with the board, if we can reach out to staff and maybe set up a call, once we digest them, just to kind of go through them in a little bit more detail. I was trying to avoid a lot of going back and forth, and see if we can kind of work through these things a little bit ahead of time, in terms of getting our response very comprehensive, if that's okay.
And then, there's a couple of things as far as process that we have to deal with. One is that they're likely going to require the Economic Redevelopment Special Permit, which if you recall, requires some synchronicity with the town board as far as schedule. They're also gonna need a review by the ARC, so we'll need to refer them. And we will also need to initiate Seeker. The only concern I have about initiating Seeker at this time, and maybe I'll look to the attorney to help me with this, is that I don't know that we have a location for, or we do maybe have a location for the water tank, but I'm not sure how that is all working, because I don't know that we have the plans to send showing where that location is, the actual formal, we have to, we have to circulate that to the DEC and everyone else. So we would need to know exactly where that's going, and that would be, have to be kind of part of the application. So that's my only hesitation, I don't know that we have that fully vetted yet.
We included a plan sheet showing the location, where we're moving it from to-
But they're not part of your application right now, right? The site plan application doesn't have, because it's, I'm assuming-
Oh, you mean like, they need to sign as like a co-applicant?
Yeah, correct, correct.
Okay.
Because you're, you're saying that as part of your application, that's being moved, and that is, essentially, I Park's site plan is changing because of your application. So they're modifying their site plan at the same time that you are.
What do you think the simplest way is, just for them to submit an application?
Maybe what we do is we, you can declare lead agency. We can hash this out, get it to a point where we figure out what we need to do, but we can declare a lead agency at least, and that way-
Is it intended to declare a lead agency?
Yes, we can, sorry, intended to declare a lead agency. And then, at least, at least-
This is Michael, the attorney. Historically, on these Economic Redevelopment Special Permits, the town board's been lead agency, so it may make sense to have the internal meeting first before the planning board distributes.
Okay. All right, so you'll think the town board will take lead agency, Michael?
Michael, did you hear the question?
I did not hear the question.
So the question-
So you're anticipating that the town board will take lead agency on this?
The town board may want to be lead agency on this.
Okay.
Okay.
So in that case, does the planning board kind of do the heavy lifting for Seeker, and then you give a recommendation saying, all right, the application's complete?
The planning board will, the town board will declare lead agency, or in the past is where the town board declares lead agency, and then it goes off to the planning board for some review of the planning for the Seeker stuff, and then the Seeker, once the planning board feels that the Seeker is complete, they will make a recommendation to the town board, and the town board may have additional issues, but more than likely, they'll, they'll defer to the planning board's recommendations.
And then chain of events? So it's town board for lead agency, then back to you for the kind of the heavy lifting and the primary review. Once you feel it's complete, you make a recommendation. Then the town board would have to approve the Economic Development Permit before you issue site plan approval.
Right, so actually, the neg deck would have to happen?
Yes.
Then they would have to approve the special permit?
Yep.
And then it would come back to the planning board for site plan?
Gotcha.
And in the past, we've done a joint public hearing with the town board when it comes time for that?
Better, yep, that's great. So yeah, our next step is, yeah, we'll dive into the comments more. I'll reach out, and we can set up a call to kind of go through each one of the comment letters and make sure we get a good comprehensive response. So do we need to get on a town board agenda to-
Yeah, I think what we'll have to do is have a meeting and figure out a schedule.
Okay.
This is what we've done in the past, we've sort of mapped out a preliminary schedule about how the meetings mesh up, because we'll need to make sure that you're hitting the meetings, you know, the town board meetings that you need to hit before you get to the planning board, and vice versa. And I don't recall if you need any variance, because I think the Economic Redevelopment Permit negates the need for variance.
With high parking coverage, yeah.
So I think at that point, what we'll probably do is have a meeting, figure out a schedule, and then map out the meetings, the town board meetings and the planning board meetings that you'll be at, and try to make it work.
And we're in front of the Fire Advisory Board beginning of February on the 7th, and you need to make a formal recommendation for us to get over to the ARB?
Yes.
Because we'd like to maybe have our first meeting in February with them as well.
I thought we did that at our last meeting.
We did, I don't know if we did or not. I don't think so, because they were just sketch at the last meeting.
For more emotion, it might not-
I think maybe we realized that they were sketching, had them pay the fees at the last meeting, so we didn't formally.
Yes.
But now they're, now they are, they're a full application.
Legit?
Yep.
So I will accept a motion to refer the applicant to the ARC? So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So done.
Is it ARB or ARC?
ARC, it was ARB, now it's ARC.
Thank you, all right, all right.
Okay.
I just had just one more comment, please. As you get more into the details, and the 2 million gallon tank that's gonna get relocated, have you thought about any kind of phasing? Are you gonna wait till that tank is gone, or is there site work that you're gonna do while that process unfolds? If you're gonna wait, that's fine, it's just one phase, but if you think you're gonna be doing other site work while that tank gets moved, we would like to see some phasing and erosion control plan broke down along those lines.
That makes sense, and I really gotta talk to the owner about that and see how that jives with Lidl's schedule, and I guess, and ideally, before Lidl touches the site, it would be gone, in my mind, and that would be the simplest.
That would be the simplest.
Yeah, so I guess I'm gonna push towards that path.
Okay.
To have it done and clean, and all relocated, and then Lidl breaks ground.
Okay.
But Murphy's Law, that, you know, it might not work out that way, but we'll try.
Okay. Anything else for the applicant? If not, thank you very much. Thank you very much. We'll look forward to seeing you again soon. If there's no other business to be brought before the planning board, I'll accept a motion to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you all.